Good morning, everyone. We're going to get started with the last day of the Section 1201 hearings. This is day seven, and we are looking at Class 11, which concerns proposed adjustments to exemptions in connection with uses of jailbreaking. My name is Reagan Smith, General Counsel of the Copyright Office. I think many who are participating or who are watching are familiar with our procedures. But I think we'll start by going over the rules, just in case. So we are being recorded, and we will be livestreamed, and a written transcript will be made available of these proceedings. This section is going to be moderated by attorneys from the government, so we'll ask questions. And if you wish to participate, you can use maybe the Zoom raise hand feature. We found has been the most reliable, but if for some reason that's not working for you, you can raise your hand in real life. Anyone watching or participating can use the chat or Q and A function. If there's technical difficulties and someone from the Copyright Office will reach out to assist you. At the end of today's hearing, which is 1:45 Eastern, we're going to have what we're calling an audience participation session, so there is still time to sign up if anyone wishes to contribute their thoughts to any of the classes in this rulemaking, and we're asking that you limit any comments to about three minutes. Again, someone from the Copyright Office will reach out if you've put in a request and provide details with how to participate for that. Please try to mute yourself when you're not speaking. I know we are all pros at this by now, but that will help the court reporter, and making sure not to talk over others will also assist that. So to start, I'm going to ask my colleagues in the Copyright Office to introduce themselves. So Mr. Amor, Ms. Kern, and then Mr. Greenberg.
Good morning, Kevin Amor, Deputy General Counsel.
Good morning, Melinda Kern, Ringer Fellow.
Good morning, Brad Greenberg, Assistant General Counsel.
Thank you. Mr. Zambrano Ramos, could you please introduce yourself?
Thank you. This is Luis Zambrano Ramos. I'm a policy analyst in NTIA's Office of Policy Analysis and Development within the Department of Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we'll go around and we'll introduce the panelists, first those who are supporting proposed adjustments. So Mr. Freeman, Mr. Stoltz, and Mr. Williamson, if you could just introduce yourself and identify the organization that you are here representing, if you are representing an organization.
My name is Jay Freeman. I am here for Sorek IT, which is my company. We developed Sidia, which is the alternative to the App Store for jailbroken iOS devices, and have been here years prior, so recognize many of your charming faces today. I also am a member of the group Exploiteers, which developed the jailbreak for the Google TV. I did not myself participate in that work directly, but I was with everyone as they were working on it, cheering them along, and saw the process of it. And I also am now in charge of technology at a company called Orchid Labs, which is building a, which raised, in fact, nearly $50 million to raise a private placement for the Internet built on top of the existing Internet that is free of censorship and surveillance, and therefore has a strong interest in network routing devices.
Hi, I'm Mitch Stoltz. I am a senior staff attorney with the Electronic Frontier Foundation.
Mr. Williamson, it looks like you might be trying to unmute, but just in case. All right, we'll come back to Mr. Williamson, who is with the Software Freedom Conservancy. Are you able to unmute, or? No. All right, so maybe someone on... We'll either come back to you, but if you need help, please message to the team. So now there's three panelists who are participating in opposition to some of the proposed changes. So please, Mr. Ayers, Mr. Reed, and Mr. Williams, could you introduce yourself? Oh, now I have two Mr. Williamson, so we'll go back to you at the end if we can.
Hello, good morning. My name is Michael Ayers, and today I'm representing Advanced Access Content System Licensing Administrator LLC, usually referred to as AACSLA, and DVD Copy Control Association, usually known by DVD CCI.
And this is Morgan Reed, and I am the President of the App Association.
Matt Williams, Mitchell Silverberg, and Nup, representing the Joint Creators and Copyright Owners.
Thank you. Mr. Williamson, do you want to see if that fixed the issue?
Apologies, Zoom frozen in opportune time. My name is Aaron Williamson. I'm an independent attorney here representing the Software Freedom Conservancy.
Okay, great. So we have various questions queued up, but I wanted to start by making sure that we have the right scope of the two requests. So as the Copyright Office understands that Software Freedom Conservancy is looking for an exemption to permit circumvention on firmware and routers and other networking devices to enable the installation of alternative firmware, is that correct, Mr. Williamson?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And then with respect to EFF, I think, Mr. Stoltz, I wanted to make sure I understand the scope of the request to modify the smart television exemption, because it seems like the language changed a little bit from the petition to the reply, and some of the written comments, which we've already read, indicate that the exemption is not intending to encompass DVD players, Blu-ray players, or set-top boxes or gaming consoles. But, you know, do you want in your own words to sort of describe what you're looking for and why, if there's anything you can say about the changes in the written submission from the initial to the reply comment?
Absolutely. We intended no change. The exemption is not meant to cover DVD or Blu-ray players or game consoles. The exemption, as we conceived it, was, you know, sort of built around the paradigmatic examples that we gave in our initial position, the Roku, the Amazon Fire devices, and the Apple TV, and similar devices. So in our reply, we discussed some sort of ways in which we might cabin that language a little bit more, but the intent is the same.
Okay, and, I mean, are you willing to cabin that language by excluding those devices that I mentioned? I think what I understood in the reply was that EFF was saying this encompasses video streaming devices, and so I think a corollary, if that's the right understanding, is whether that phrase is descriptive enough to keep in what you mean to keep in and keep out where some of the objections had been raised.
Yes, that is the intent. As we wrote in our reply, but I can mention it here. I think what we're, the way we propose this is devices that run a variety of applications with a primary purpose of streaming video from the public Internet for display on a TV screen and not integrated into other types of devices, such as video disc players or game consoles.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to comment as to whether that clarification is helpful, or Mr. Ayers?
Thank you. Yeah, I certainly appreciate the clarification that there's no intent to cover DVD players, Blu-ray players, and gaming consoles, which include DVD and Blu-ray drives. I'm still, because certainly, as originally proposed, the language covered quite, even if not intended, kind of a very broad swath of devices, anything that provided a software application on a screen, which includes DVD and Blu-ray playback. Those are enabled by software on devices, even if they're not doing Internet streaming. I remain concerned, though, about the primary purpose test, especially in the context of devices with multiple functions, like a game console or like a Blu-ray player that has streaming abilities, is what exactly is the primary purpose? How is that going to be determined, and what happens if that primary purpose arguably evolves over time? A device with physical playback capability may have been, may, in the public mind, be considered primarily for that physical media, but over time, as streaming becomes more popular in the public mind, depending on whose mind we're looking at here, it may be determined that this is a multi-function, or it's a streaming device that just happens to play physical discs. So I do remain concerned about the primary purpose test.
Thank you. Do you have a sense whether that is likely to happen in the next three years, Mr. Ayers, with respect to the devices you're here discussing?
I don't know. We could certainly think about that and get back to you. I think we already have the situation where a lot of these devices are considered multipurpose. They're offered as entertainment devices, not necessarily specifically as a Blu-ray player. So I think we already have an element of that to consider today.
Okay, thank you. I see Mr. Stoltz, you even indicated you wanted to respond, but I think it might make sense to let Mr. Williams comment first, and then you could respond to it. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Yeah, I have similar concerns to Mr. Ayers. It is quite helpful, of course, to acknowledge that consoles and Blu-ray players and cables and satellite set-top boxes should not be covered, but the language that's put forward in the reply just doesn't get there, even setting aside whether there's an issue with jailbreaking, so to speak, of these other plug-in type streaming devices. I mean, for some users of a Blu-ray player, the primary reason they have it is they have an older television, and they want to watch Netflix, or they want to watch Hulu, and they use the Blu-ray player to access those applications, because they don't have a smart TV. And so they may play Blu-rays as well, but their primary purpose for that device might be for streaming content. And, you know, for video game consoles, the language also doesn't work for me, because if you're talking about a Switch, for example, it doesn't have a disk drive, there's no optical drive, the way the wording is put forward, it talks about a device that's designed to display applications on a screen, including streaming video. I mean, that, it's, the language is just too broad and could sweep in consoles. And so it would be great, of course, to say in some regulation or in the recommendation, these things are definitely not covered. That would give us some comfort. But as the marketplace develops, as these exemptions get renewed over time, or even within the next three years, the way things are progressing, the language has to be really precise, and I don't know how to fix it for them. I've thought about it, but it's a hard line to draw, and I don't think they've been able to draw it so far. And so we're still very uncomfortable with it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Stoltz, would you like to respond to those comments?
Yeah, so these are three-year exemptions, and they're based on the record before us and not the speculative record of what might happen in three years, which nobody has a crystal ball and nobody has proposed. What we have right now is really evident from looking at the website of any major electronics retailer, and all of them, the major ones that we've looked at, put streaming players or streaming boxes in their own category, separate from DVD and Blu-ray players, separate from game consoles. Now, we have proposed to explicitly exclude those, regardless of the primary purpose of the device, specifically exclude devices that are integrated with either a disc player or game console. The... Yeah, I'll leave it there for now. Just as I say, the other... No, I'll leave it there for now. Thank you.
Okay, can I ask you one follow-up question, which is, it seems like from the initial petition to the reply, the word "television" has been substituted for "screen", and could you address what was motivating that change? So the existing regulatory exemption was for so-called smart televisions, you know, which was based on the record in 2015, and we want to understand what's motivating the proposed language change there.
Just that it could be a computer monitor.
And in your understanding, it's the same type of devices would connect to the computer monitor as to the television, is that right, or?
Yes, anything that basically could take an HDMI input.
Okay. Thank you. Now I'm going to pass the questioning to my colleague, Mr. Amor.
Thank you. So just to sort of continue on this line, I'm wondering, I think I'll start with the opponents. So assuming it's possible to define the exemption in such a way that is clear that, you know, it excludes things like video game consoles and Blu-ray players, and I'm not saying necessarily it's possible to do that, but if it's possible to define an exemption that applies to, that is limited to sort of video streaming devices that, of the type that the petitioners have described, do you have particular concerns about the effect on the market if the exemption were to cover those types of devices? Mr. Williams.
Yeah, thank you. So we do still have concerns, and I think they're substantial concerns. Once these devices are altered, there's a lot of applications out there that infringe on my client's works. And when the devices are tied to a store, let's say, of the provider of the device, that provider has some control, some ability to remove applications once there are problems identified, and once they are hacked, that might go away. And so we do have concerns about that. We tried to lay them out in our comments. I recognize that they're similar to the concerns we've raised for multiple cycles with respect to other devices, and that the Office has ultimately decided to grant those proposals. But we wanted to make sure it was clear, we do have concerns, and there's a lot of infringement out there. It's well documented in government documents as well as court cases, and so we have a lot of concerns about it.
Thank you. Mr. Stoltz?
Yeah, thank you. So it's, you know, let's, I think we can all acknowledge right now that infringement exists, infringing applications exist. But I wanted to point out that something else that's existed for 11 years now, and that's that we, there have been exemptions covering jailbreaking of personal electronic devices for 11 years now, and the devices that are in many ways very similar to what we're proposing here. Most significantly, we've now had an exception for, I believe it's six years, for smart TVs. What we're proposing is a slightly expanded class, a narrow expansion that covers not only smart TVs where the hardware is integrated into the display, but where the streaming hardware is separated out into a box or stick, but otherwise functionally equivalent. And here's what we know about those. They have not significantly contributed to infringement, as the Office has recognized in past cycles. There is, and that's the relevant question, right? The relevant question is not, do there exist apps that assist infringements? We know that those exist. The question is, does granting this exception so that law-abiding people can add and remove functionality from the devices that they own contributes in any material way to infringement, and there is no evidence of that in the record?
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
All right, I think there are three parts of this. The first is that Mr. Stoltz was using the term "no significant increase in infringement". That's not the standard that the Copyright Office uses. The second part of this that's worth noting is, we're not in a situation where there isn't an alternative. There are plenty of alternatives. You can throw Linux on a USB stick and plug it into your TV, and there's plenty of open source streaming capability that you can do without hacking a device that someone else has put copyrighted material on that they want to protect and profit off of. So the market hasn't failed. There is the availability of this technology widely available in other places. And then the third point, and I think we've kind of danced around it, is, Kevin, you kind of got to it, which is, at a certain point, it's becoming indistinguishable. Anything with a USB port in it is essentially capable of running what amounted to a supercomputer 20 years ago. So the idea of transporting it from the TV to the stick is not a minor expansion. It's an enormous expansion, because it's essentially the ability to change anything that plugs into your screen and jailbreak it. So I think that, basically, that's not the standard. We haven't met... It's a much broader expansion than to describe it as merely going from something installed to something not. And I think we're, right now, we're not limited in the market. And just very quickly to go back to an earlier point, Mr. Stoltz was saying, well, you know, they divide these Blu-ray players from boxes that stream. While he was talking, I just did a quick Google search. So the Sony S3700 is $78 with Wi-Fi and USB installed, and its top picture that it shows is a Blu-ray player. You see the picture of the Blu-ray player. The next screen is Netflix. So Sony is marketing these products, and I've got a bunch of them up here, with, they'll play your disc, but they'll stream your Netflix. So I think this idea that there's some bright wall of separation between the box that plays the disc and the box that streams your content is no longer the reality we live in. And you can buy it for $78, so it's not even a, it's not even a price competition issue. Thank you.
Can I ask one question? It sounds like you're disagreeing, Mr. Reed, with Mr. Stoltz's characterization of the expansion to devices that are otherwise functionally equivalent to the current exemption for smart televisions, where the functionality is embedded in the television. Can you just elaborate upon what you see as, where those differences are from a technological perspective or other functional perspective, based on how they define it?
Well, as I said, you hit on it earlier, Reagan, you're talking about screen versus TV, and how do we define television? The reality is, is that anything with a screen that I can plug a USB port into, it's, or an HDMI, HDMI has its own, has its own separate capabilities. But if I'm plugging a USB stick into it or have access to its display capabilities through that, I'm essentially, the world is my oyster. I can do almost anything I'd want to do. So I think that limiting it or try to create this artificial construct of its preponderance of its capabilities to stream, and we've moved it from inside the TV to a stick outside the TV, once you move it outside that TV, you moved into that format, you've really opened the door to, I can't even, basically, it's the Internet of Things, right? It's a door opener for everything. So it's not limited, because it's not just something that came inside of a TV and we're modifying it. Earlier, Matt gave a great example where he said, you know, you have an older TV, and you want to plug in your Blu-ray box, and that's how you're going to get your Netflix. So I think that if you think about what that capability is going on, now instead of a Blu-ray box, I'm doing a Cody box. I can do almost anything a computer would want to do in that case. So it isn't limited, because once I'm plugged in, I have access to pretty much everything I need, and it's much closer to plugging in a full computer. In fact, arguably, it is.
Could I, if I could respond to that?
Sure, sure.
I think, I would hope that we actually talk about the definition that we proposed and refined, because it is not, in fact, that broad. And it is also, as we've said, focused on the paradigmatic examples that we've given, the Amazon Fire devices, the Apple TV, the Roku. Beyond that, again, so Mr. Reed mentioned Cody, but Cody is a lawful product. And one can already run Cody while taking advantage of the existing exemptions on a smartphone, on a tablet, on various other devices. That's, that's, that is something to be encouraged.
Let me just, let me just ask another question here, and I think it relates to this same theme. So you can hopefully address, your previous comments can address this. So I know that the opponent cited a number of cases, for example, where they talked about various enforcement actions that copyright owners have pursued against manufacturers of devices, some of which, I guess, allow, involve Cody. Others, I guess, have preloaded content. I know the Joint Creator cited the Tick Box case and the Dragon Media case. I wonder if you could talk about how similar or different a jailbroken streaming device is compared to the devices in those cases? Is the dividing line, you know, is the relevant dividing line based on whether content is preloaded on the device, or should that not be as relevant?
The relevant dividing line comes from the law, and that law says, an open, fully configurable media player, which one can think of like a web browser, is a lawful product. A player that is preconfigured to connect to infringing streams is a form of inducement of copyright infringement. So those cases that the MPA cited in their papers concerned, as I understand it, devices that were preconfigured to connect with infringing streams. A jailbroken fire stick or Apple TV is not that. It is not that until software is added to it that has those characteristics. Again, the same, the same thing applies on a cellphone, on a smartphone, the same thing applies on a tablet. But jailbreaking itself, it's, but for the prohibition of Section 1201A, is still a lawful product. That's the difference.
Okay. Mr. Freeman, I know you've been waiting, so let me go to you first, and then we can come back to you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you. So there's a clarification that I think is important to make here, and this is from the perspective of somebody who is maybe, maybe deeply integrated with the software stacks that we're using, and so in the technology that we're actually working with here. So we often are using the term jailbreak, and we're using it fairly loosely. And we all come here every three years, and we talk about, we talk about jailbreak a lot, and we, I think we all have a general idea of what it is. But there are specific nuances that are, that think are very important, that are related to the written comments from Mr. Reed, as well as the joint copyright, and now the spoken commentary, both from Mr. Reed and from Mr. Stoltz, with relation to when, what functionality you would need to jailbreak a device for versus not. And so I'm going to take one specific example that is kind of threaded through a lot of the different comments here, and that is relating to Cody and a fire stick. This is something that in Mr. Reed's comments, there's specific mention of, there's a website you can find, TroyPoint.com, that talks about how you jailbreak a fire stick and you install Cody on it. And there was even commentary here about some, some of the discussion, even from Mr. Stoltz, talking about applications you might load onto a, under a jailbroken device. The vast majority, if not almost all, the devices that we're talking about in this class of devices that are designed to show applications on the screen are user extensible in the form of applications that they're allowed to run, and are, in fact, are user extensible by the end user of the applications they are allowed to run. And they are not designed to prevent people from writing an application, even one that is primarily designed to infringe and running it on the device without any circumvention of any technological measure. The, in particular, I will pick on the fire stick. That website, TroyPoint.com, has no clue what the term jailbreak means. They use the term jailbreak continually to mean taking a third taking a third-party application and loading it on the device using the supported feature of going into the settings panel and saying, I would like to be able to load a third-party application onto this device. And so I, there, I feel like we need to really be focusing our, our attention on what is the actual infringement that we're talking about? What is the actual infringement that is possible? And I, I'm kind of under the, the maybe naive impression that the idea is that, well, there's copy, copyrighted music and movies that are moving through this device that people are going to jailbreak it and then rip that content off the device. And that is not what Codi is doing, and that's not what any of these other, other products are doing. I don't know if I've heard of anybody who, who are, who are waiting on jailbreaks for these devices in order to get that content. And I see Mr. Reed shaking his head and I, and I, and I just want to say that I think that the reason why I have that naive impression is that loading a, and this, this now ties directly, Mr. Stoltz had said, loading a third-party application onto a device to add functionality to it is not bypassing the technological protection measure for purposes of accessing any of the content that is being protected by that technological protection measure. And therefore seems outside of the scope of the statute that we're discussing. And so all of this discussion about loading third-party applications on the devices seems out of scope for so many reasons that I find that we always end up getting so stuck on this idea of, well, what could you do with the device theoretically? But it doesn't seem relevant. So that, that, that was a comment.
Okay, thank, thank you. Let me, so let's go to Mr. Reed and then Mr. Williams. And, and then Mr. Stoltz quickly, and then I think we're going to move to the next topic.
Well, weirdly enough, I'm going to agree with Mr. Freeman almost entirely on almost all of that from the standpoint of developing a stack and the ability of third-party applications to run on products. That's what my members do. We write applications that run on products. The difference that we're running into here, and it was interesting with Mr. Stoltz saying that Codi box, the underpinning software is legal and legitimate, also completely correct. The difference is we don't have a market failure, number one. And number two, we're now getting wrapped around the axle on the whole platforms debate and discussion, right? So that the purveyors of these products that use TPMs to protect what third-party applications can be installed or how they're installed have some measure of control and they use copyright appropriately to, in, to ensure some level of, of control over those platforms. Now, this would be a much more interesting discussion if there was literally no other way to put a plug a device in. But we quite, we have plenty of open source USB sticks that are available. So the ability of my members to write applications that run on a fire stick or an Apple TV, part of the decision we're making from a market perspective is the advantages of that user interface and the safety and security that the user feels. So degrading it and having a world where the applications are less certain, less for sure. And look, Sidia, there's some great stuff on there to Mr. Freeman's credit. That's a, there's some wonderful things on that product. But frankly, most of the users out there on the iPhone are looking for a different experience than is provided. I enjoy some of that stuff, but it's not, it's not for everyone. So the problem that we're seeing, Mr. Amor, is we don't have a market failure and the ability to load third-party applications are something that the holders of the TPMs want to have some modicum of control over. To Mr. Freeman's point, it's not, it's not 100%. To Mr. Stoller's point earlier, bad things do slip through. But what we're talking about here is expanding that exemption when there isn't a clear-cut need for it. And the standard that the Copyright Office needs to use is one where you're needing to create an exemption to fill a hole where something's missing, either in the market or the capability. And that's just not the situation that we're seeing. I certainly know my members will love putting, you know, love putting apps on wherever they can. But we also benefit from some of the platform advantages.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Mr. Freeman next. Or was that?
I'm sorry, I just had not lowered my hand from earlier.
Okay, that's fine. Let's go to Mr. Williams and then Mr. Stoltz. You can respond to both.
Thank you. So on the Codi box cases and the similar cases about applications that, that are involved in illegal streaming of video. I mean, I want to be clear that I am not personally litigating those cases. So I, I do want to make sure I'm clear on that because some of these details are, are important, of course, but my understanding is that in at least some of those cases, Amazon Content Services is a plaintiff. I also understand that at some point in time, because of its association with infringement, Amazon's App Store stopped facilitating the downloads of the Codi application. My understanding is also that Google stopped stopped prioritizing search results for Codi because of its association with infringement. And if you look at the website for Codi, I think you can kind of make up your own mind on how they market themselves. But there is a real problem there. And the, the cases are trying to address that problem and it, it is only exacerbated by removing the ability of an app store to try to address infringement concerns. The other point I just wanted to make is that what Mr. Freeman is saying about the ability to install third-party apps on these devices, if true, renders the need for this exemption zero because there are alternatives. And if consumers are looking to do this and they're proactive about it, then they can already do it, if I'm understanding his point. And why undermine the kind of typical retail setting that most consumers experience by encouraging these devices to be hacked if people who actually are proactively interested in doing this can already do it?
Okay. Mr. Stoltz, yeah, let's go to you next. And then I, I take it, Mr. Freeman, did you want to just quickly respond to that last point about? Okay, so Mr. Stoltz.
Thank you. I, I think we should talk a little bit about what the need is. Again, this is, this is, this is in our papers, so I won't, so I won't belabor it, but so one, one need is, is with the Apple TV. That's a, that's a high-end device, a fairly expensive one that does not allow side-loading. People who want to add applications of their choice that were not pre-approved by Apple have to jailbreak, and that's very similar to, to another, other devices that run iOS. Other devices, Android-based devices and, and some other ones. Mr. Freeman is absolutely correct that those allow side-loading, but there's a few things that you don't get with side-loading. You don't get fundamental access to the device, which means you can't change, which, which means there are aspects of it that, that can't be changed. So for example, wanting a different home screen. And that's really important because the manufacturers of, of these products steer the user towards their own video offerings or the video offerings of, of trusted partners. And, and one aspect of, one, and one important reason why people want to, to have fundamental access to the devices that they own is, is to choose the video they want to see without being steered. So that's, so that's another example. And, and I'll give a third, which is making devices compatible with other devices that people happen to own. So the ability to use game controllers that you may have with a streaming device that you have in a way that, that hasn't been implemented by the manufacturer. Connecting phones or other personal computing devices, allowing them to interact with this, with the streaming device in ways that the, again, that the manufacturer hasn't already implemented and, and isn't approved of in the, in, in, in the App Store. And then very quickly, instantly, so this notion of, well, the app authors or, or, or platform maintainers having the ability to use TPMs, that's not what's at stake in this rulemaking. There's nothing in Section 1201 affects a manufacturer's ability to use TPMs, particularly because most of, most users don't jailbreak. Jailbreaking is a significant minority of users who want expanded capabilities, who have these needs. Another one, by the way, is that is, is increasing privacy, say, by running a VPN. And to, to control where people's personal information goes. That's, that's something else you can't necessarily do with side-loading.
Let me just, and I, sorry, let me just jump in because I, I want to be mindful of time. So I want to give Mr. Freeman a chance to make his point, and then we do have to turn to the next topic. So, Mr. Freeman.
Because I just wanted to help draw, draw this line that in some sense Mitch is describing here. But, and so the, the list that Mitch has, Mitch has given is actually, interestingly, in the document from Joint Copyright, is like these uses include, and there's an entry one, adding a web browser to a streaming device. And then I provide a slight separation and then I say, you know, installing different home screens, like saver, controllers, broadcast TV tuner, a list that continues. And then at the end of the paragraph, it is stating that these identified uses can be accomplished through devices without access controls, event app installations that are readily available in the marketplace, talking the same discussion we're having here. The line that I think is important to draw is, is that there is a supported set of functionality that applications are allowed to have in these different platforms. And then there is what you're able to do when you have jailbroken the device. And that, that separation is where we oftentimes talk about the restrictions that Apple has on their, on their, for example, on their, their app stores, which include on the Apple TV. But ironically, the thing that everyone here is always concerned about, which is building applications like Codi, is virtually never in the set of restricted things of, 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 of the companies that are, you know, we, we talk about as having extremely restricted practices with relation to what you can install on your device. I'm sitting next to an Apple TV that is not jailbroken, that's running Codi. I can't run my Orchid Labs VPN software on it. I'm unable to, it's got a really, it's got a screensaver that actually started making me feel seasick. And I really want to change it. I can't change the screensaver. There's a lot of functionality in the device that I have no ability to change. But ironically, the only thing that I am easily able to put on it here is I can install Codi on it without issue because no one is restricting the ability to display things to the screen or use access on the network. And, and I want, I, I really feel like that, that line needs to be, needs to be understood because I feel that without understanding that line, we end up in these discussions of, of thinking that these exemptions are going to enable some, some large amount of infringement, even ones that I feel are not related to the statute. But it in fact doesn't. That, the, the, they, those infringement possibilities were always here. The thing that you're limiting us from being able to do is to get access to that extended functionality.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Does anyone disagree with that characterization of, of what the access controls are doing? Mr. Reed?
I, I would, I would say I wouldn't disagree, but I would give a codicil. So in the terms of service with Apple, for example, one of the things that we are, we are not permitted to do is use undocumented APIs. And so jailbreaking in part is, well, I want to mess with the guts of this product. I want to do something that isn't part of what Apple allows me to do. But here's the reality of it. We don't have a market failure in that there are other products that if you want to tweak, test, turn, and do other things, there are plenty of products available. And as Mr. Freeman noted, the reason that Codi box, the baseline software that runs Codi is available on these app stores is that the underpinning software itself does not necessarily mean that infringement is going to happen. The problem, as the Copyright Office has noted, is what becomes the primary or most regular use for it? And it doesn't take much of a web search to see that that's a, a primary purpose. But yeah, I mean, this is the natural pull and tension that exists between somebody who wants to tinker and a company that wants to sell an experience. And Apple sells an experience. They want that Apple TV, TV to have a certain experience and they built it into their pricing model and the way that they sell it to my developers about what we get out of being part of this platform. We get access to customers in a way that they're more willing to use our applications. So the problem that he's outlining, I don't think necessarily is a problem because the market has offered other solutions. You don't have to buy an Apple TV. They aren't the only product on the market. They are very highly restrictive. From a member's perspective, there are benefits to that. There are also trade-offs. We don't have access to the full suite of APIs. But there are some significant economic benefits that go to third-party developers who participate on those platforms.
Mr. Ayers, did you have something quick, quickly?
Yeah, and, and thank you. And acknowledging that if we actually are talking about expressly and explicitly carving out DVD, Blu-ray and players and game consoles, it may be less of an issue. But just to clarify, as I've mentioned in other, other elements of this hearing, of these hearings over the past couple of weeks, the firmware of a device is not only protecting against, or restricting the ability to install third-party software and, and not only protecting against malware and so forth, but it's also used to protect other elements of the device that are used in a content protection ecosystem such as making sure that the applicable cryptographic elements such as decryption keys, device keys are available and secure for the device to play protected content. So that's one of the, the elements that's protected by the firmware in addition to all these other functionalities we've talked about.
Okay, thank you. I believe my colleague, Ms. Kern, has a few follow-up questions to sort of build down on this issue a little bit more. And then we will turn to the, to SFC's petition regarding routers.
Thank you, Mr. Amor. So I just had a couple of questions on how the proposed exemption differs from the current jailbreaking exemption that's currently in place. So I just wanted to ask whether the TPMs used for non-integrated video streaming devices differ from those for integrated streaming devices? And if there is a difference, what are they? And do these different TPMs require different avenues of circumvention?
They do not. The, the smart TVs, smart TVs that are, that are capable of running a wide variety of applications primarily use versions of Android, as do many of the non-integrated devices. For the most part, we're, we're, why they're talking about flavors of Android, including Amazon's versions of Android, or we're talking about versions of Apple's iOS, or we're, or we're talking about the manufacturers proprietary operating systems, which, which do exist in both of these cases, but the types of TPMs and the methods of circumvention are essentially the same within each one of those sort of software platforms.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I saw you nodding your head. Is that correct?
That is definitely correct.
Thank you. Okay. And then moving to Mr. Williams. Joint creators and copyright owners argued that the lack of functionalities that proponents seek to add into devices protected by TPMs is a mere inconvenience and that these, I guess, uses can be accomplished through devices that are already available on the market. So I guess, can you please provide specific examples of adequate alternatives to circumvention?
Sure. And I think part of what we said was based on what they admit in their comments, which is a lot of this is just because people want to do it because they enjoy it and they think it's fun. And that's okay, but it's not really a justification for creating a regulation in the CFR of this, you know, import. And so that's kind of why we said a lot of this is about convenience. And then on the alternative side, I mean, one thing that Mr. Stoltz was talking about was using your video game console controller to operate one of these streaming stick devices. And you can just Google these streaming stick devices. I mean, they come with their own controller. You know, it, you don't need to use your video game console controller to control one of these devices. You've already got your own controller if you want it and you want to use it. And so there's another question with that one also, which is does this exemption even enable that? Or would you also have to hack the video game console controller, which would not be covered, as I understand it, by this proposal? So those are the kinds of, of issues that we were trying to point out. And we've discussed some of them today, that there's other ways of accomplishing the same goals without this exemption and that, you know, if it really is a matter of people just wanting to, to have fun with some of these devices, I don't think that's grounds for an exemption.
And Mr. Stoltz, would you like to respond?
Yes, Mr. Williams' clients produce entertainment.
So if if the question is, what can, wanting to have fun, that's kind of all we're talking about here, except it isn't really, because people can also use these devices to inform themselves and to communicate with 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 others. So I think I think importance may be a little bit in the eye of the beholder, but if but if the test is having fun, then we're you know, there is, there is, there is an equivalency here. Another point to to some of the ways that Mr. Mr. Williams and 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 Mr. Reed have presented evidence in this hearing, now there there are no rules of evidence in this proceeding, nor should there be. But I I would offer that presenting, I just did a Google search, and here are some of the undisclosed websites that I found is is not a very helpful method of adducing facts in this proposal. You know, we can Google as well. We have cited our sources in our papers. So this notion of sort of what one might find out there, I guarantee you, you can find anything you want out there on the internet. Finally, specifically about game controllers, the majority of them, in my understanding, do not have TPMs on them. And again, the issue is equipment that you already own, being able to use it in the in 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 use them together. And, you know, this idea of, oh, well, you can go out and buy more equipments. That's that's not a rationale that the Copyright Office has has ever credited with regard to jailbreaking exemptions. I mean, you can go buy another phone. You can use a PC instead of a phone. I mean, but this is this, this is this precedent is is that that's not an operative concern with respect to jailbreaking. There's no reason why that should be an operative concern with with respect to non-integrated streaming devices when it was not a concern with integrated streaming devices.
Thank you. And then just one more question. And I'll direct this to you, Mr. Stoltz. So in past recommendations, jailbreaking was recommended because the exemption sought to install alternative software. In some of your comments, you note that users want to jailbreak video streaming devices to install other apps and programs such as and control and Air Magic. And then you mentioned a couple of other things, such as, I believe it was increased privacy, devices compatible with others in the home, installing a different home screen and possibly sideloading. So my question is basically, how are users adversely affected by their inability to install apps or programs or do some of the things that you had mentioned previously?
Oh, well, all of those things require jailbreaking. Oh, and and I realize that in this proceeding, we've used the word, the term jailbreaking a bit loosely, and Mr. Freeman is 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 correct about that. The term jailbreaking originally came from the 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 iOS, so the the Apple world. And we use it a little bit more loosely here, really to mean to to gain fundamental access to the device for the purpose of adding or removing software. But all of those things are are adding or removing software, and one cannot do them without circumventing access controls on the device.
Thank you. And then it looks like Mr. Zambranos Ramos has a question.
Thank you, Ms. Kern. This would be for proponents. I'm curious if some of these uses have to do with accessibility. So, for example, using a game controller instead of the controller that that came with with the with the stick. And if you could talk a little bit more about those uses, thank you.
Yes, those those can absolutely pertain to accessibility. Certainly, different forms of controllers have different forms of accessibility, different different levels of accessibility. The, I believe it was called N-Controller, the 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 idea that was was sort of a universal control interface to a streaming device. It would, in other words, one can 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 use any sort of input device, basically anything that can simulate a mouse or keyboard to provide input to the device, which means, which means whatever device is most accessible to the user. So so that is absolutely a factor. Otherwise, you're sort of at the mercy of the manufacturer. I should add that that can also include manipulations of the screen. This is something, again, that you can't do with sideloading. So inverting the video to to make the text more readable or altering the the colors that are displayed on the screen to to make them more readable to people with 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 certain visual disabilities. So that's 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 another feature that generally can't be done with sideloading and 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 not at all on on an Apple device without jailbreaking.
Okay. Great. I think we are going to have to move to the next topic. And so I want to turn to Mr. Williamson, your petition regarding jailbreaking of routers and other networking devices. I just would like to start with you and invite you to sort of describe generally what the purpose of this exemption would be and and to describe the types of activities that you're hoping to to make possible.
All right, absolutely. And I appreciate the the opportunity to testify here today. So my client Software Freedom Conservancy is a nonprofit organization that supports the development of free and open source software and advocates for the rights of of users to to use software in the way that's most suited to them. They are the fiscal sponsor for a project called Open WRT, which is a which is a project to produce an open source, free and open source software operating system that can be run on routers and other dedicated networking devices. And as we pointed out in our in our petition, Open WRT allows users, you know, number one, to secure their devices. It's it's regularly updated. And and, you know, as we pointed out, research suggests updated far more frequently with security patches than the stock software that comes on routers. It gives users the opportunity to protect their privacy, for example, by by installing DNS encryption and VPN software on the router itself. And it gives users the opportunity to run a host of free and open source applications on their router that wouldn't necessarily be available without without replacing the the firmware on the router. And as we pointed out, it also supports several research efforts into development of of new networking techniques that that have directly fed into the development of networking standards and improved networking capabilities.
Okay, great. Thank you. I wanted to invite the the opponents to address this proposal. I know there were some concerns in the comments. In particular, there seemed to be a concern about similar to to the other petition about to what extent, what what devices this would cover and to what extent this might permit access to to other types of copyrighted work. So I know that Software Freedom Conservancy in its reply said that routers and other networking devices possess neither the video outputs required to transmit content to televisions nor the processing power to run video streaming applications. So I wonder if the if that addresses any of the concerns that the opponents have raised, if that sort of allays any of the concerns you had with this proposal. Mr. Ayers.
Thank you. Again, this is sort of like, this is a situation where the explanation is helpful, certainly. But I'm not sure it exactly matches with the the proposal as currently drafted. And and so I'm I'm assuming there's there's a way to get to there from here. In my concern is with the 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 text, other networking devices, where that could actually be a very broad term, and I would want to make sure that I don't, I don't think this is the intention. My understanding of the explanation is that this is not the intention, but as currently drafted, other networking devices could arguably sweep in anything with Wi-Fi. And so we'd want to make sure that we're not doing that. Or even taking just a slightly step further, many devices now generate their own local area networks, their own SSIDs in order to make it easy for a consumer to make a network connection with that device and to use a a remote device to to adjust other settings. I'd want to make sure that those sorts of devices, that, for instance, a game console that generates its own SSID in order to allow easy setup is not swept into the category of other networking devices, simply for that that reason.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson.
Yeah, I understand that concern, and that's that's obvious. That's absolutely not the intention to sweep in just any any device that has networking capabilities. So I, you know, I think that we would support an exemption that that extended to dedicated networking devices, including routers, switches, hubs, bridges, gateways, modems, repeaters and access points. And that that would be effectively, you know, those dedicated devices would be a pretty comprehensive list of the devices that we're concerned with.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Yeah, thanks. I I agree with Mr. Ayers, and the narrowing is helpful. We we definitely want to make sure things like VR headsets, other devices that can connect directly are not swept into this proposal, and that it's really focused on the types of uses that Mr. Williamson has identified, things like upgrading the security protections on the router, etc. There was some comment in, I think, the opening comments that basically said these routers are the equivalent of general purpose computers. And so, you know, drawing the line the way you did, Mr. Amer, that that says, well, then they're not, they're somehow not capable of running streaming applications. You know, I'm not sure that that, those two things work together. So I think the line drawing here is going to be the most important part. And I think adding also the limiting language that you included in the voice assistant exemption last cycle, but is not in some of the preexisting exemptions, we would support doing that, or even language that's even more limiting.
Okay, that's that's helpful. Mr. Reed, do you have a similar position to Mr. Williams in that you, it it sounds like there may be some openness to the substance of this proposal, if there is appropriate limiting language. Is that?
Yeah, that's that's correct. And I have a personal fondness for Open WRT. I think there still may be some code in there that I wrote back in the days, but the question I had for Aaron Williamson very quickly was, how are we envisioning mesh networks? So, for example, let's say a Blu-ray player, we're going to start seeing it on mesh. Do you see this extension? If if the, if one of Mr. Ayers' clients Blu-ray player is now an extender, a range extender, or is part of now that we've jumped to some of the new standards onto a mesh network, do you think that that you want to keep it limited enough that, no, it doesn't mean you can open up the Blu-ray player? But we can get to, say, the baseline links this router and make a modification there or or do software updates, but not necessarily break into the Blu-ray player, even though it might be part of a mesh network. That's that's my interpretation of your limiting, and that sounds fine. I mean, that sounds reasonable to solve Mr. Ayers' problem and Mr. Williams' points of view on the general purpose computer.
Yeah, my, you know, maybe my client will wrap my knuckles, but I I I'm not aware of any plans to put Open WRT on on Blu-ray devices. Nor nor is that's what what's contemplated by our comment.
In which case, then I think the limiting language is helpful, but I agree with Mr. with Matt Williams' you know, points, and just be careful that we don't turn it into a an exemption that gets Mr. Ayers' clients wrapped around the axle. So, yes, thank you for the limiting explanation, Mr. Williamson.
Mr. Zambranos.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Amir. Just a couple of questions for proponents. I just want to make clear that would this include the modem router combos that are sometimes leased by Internet access providers? And then the second question, here, if you could drill down a little bit on on the TPMs at issue, I noticed there were different kinds of TPMs and different methods of circumvention. And at one point, I think your comments mentioned that the TPM protect the stock operating systems of the networking devices. Curious if you could talk a little bit more about how that protection works. Does it control access to the stock firmware? Does it just prevent you from loading a different firmware? Does it do both or do something else? Thank you.
Sure, thank you. So, you know, I guess I don't think that there is any intention here to enable the installation of alternative software on on a device you don't otherwise have the right to install software on, right? So a leased router, I think, would properly fall outside the scope of the proposed exemption. And sorry, apologies, quick, a quick reminder of the second half of your question.
How do the TPMs at issue work? What exactly do they protect?
Yeah.
Do they protect access to the to the firmware software? Did they just prevent you from loading different firmware?
They primarily prevent, as I understand it, they, you know, many of many of the routers that are the examples that we cited on our comment involve firmware encryption schemes that that basically check to see whether the firmware you're loading is consistent with the firmware encryption scheme that that, you know, they that they want to see on a on a new firmware for installation. So it's necessary to circumvent or reverse engineer that encryption scheme in order to produce a firmware that is encrypted according to the right sort of protocol. I, there are also definitely examples out there of, you know, of firmwares that are encrypted on on the device and, you know, and then sort of loaded into memory decrypted, I believe. And there are also, you know, there are also your typical access controls, you know, username and password, that sometimes it's necessary to circumvent those to get root access to the device. Those are the the ones I'm primarily familiar with.
And sorry, just a follow up. And do you think that all of those TPMs you mentioned constitute TPMs under the statute?
Well, unfortunately, this is, you know, I advise clients on on the scope of of section 1201 regularly, and and, you know, the the language is very broad, right? And so it's 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 difficult to say with certainty which of those TPMs would be considered to effectively control access to a copyrighted work or protect the right of a copyright owner. So certainly, they're all, they're all measures that that I think could could be interpreted that way.
Um, I wanted to check in, Mr. Zambranos Ramos, do you have any more questions?
No, thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Um, so I think that we are done with our questions, but we wanted to give any of the panelists an opportunity, you know, sort of a last call, if there's anything you think that we should know before we conclude this hearing, we might, we'll probably wrap up a little bit early. So I don't know, Mr. Williams, if your hand is still raised or newly raised. Let me know, Mr. Williamson. And if not, I see Mr. Stoltz has raised his hand. Okay, Mr. Stoltz.
Uh, thanks. I just, and again, thank you for this opportunity. Would I just wanted to reiterate that and point out that there is, you know, a very small difference between the existing exemption, which has been in place for six years, and what we've proposed here with regard to non-integrated streaming devices. And what you won't find in the record is any meaningful distinction. So so opponents have not offered up any meaningful distinction. In fact, I I I think Mr. Williams said that, you know, that his objections are the same objection that he has raised in previous cycles and and that the Copyright Office has not credited. So I'll leave you with that, and thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Stoltz. Mr. Freeman?
This is one very minor clarification that I will be kicking myself forever if I don't don't quickly add. So I separated out in the joint copyright list of of uses, the adding a web browser versus all of the other ones. And the reason why I separate that one out is that that's a use case where you might ostensibly believe that where you can build a web browser if you're given merely the same access you would need in order to print things to the screen, such as with Cody, where my description with that. But in fact, web browser engines, because of their third party code loading security requirements, in addition to a lot of their intricate performance requirements, actually require more access to the system than is oftentimes given to third party application developers. And so I just wanted to kind of throw in there that that this 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 subtle line throw in there that this subtle line between the things that are allowed, which weirdly include Cody, and the things that are not allowed, which include all of these things that we would like to be able to do, is extremely subtle, but.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, for the clarification. Mr. Williams?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of clarification points about what Mr. Stoltz just said. I tried at the beginning to articulate that we have kind of multiple grounds for objecting and opposing this, this proposal. The first one, and the most important one for us does not relate to the objections that we've put forward in the past that the office has disagreed with us on. And that's the one we focused on first during the hearing, which is, how do you define this class in a way that doesn't sweep in the devices that Mr. Stoltz says he doesn't want to cover? And the language they've put forward, I would submit, doesn't succeed in that, whether it's integrated or not integrated into, into a device. It doesn't address the concerns that I raised about the fact that some video game consoles don't even have disk drives. They certainly run applications. They certainly stream video to a screen. And so that's our primary objection. The point I was trying to make about past decisions and the office's kind of disagreement with where I come out on things was more about the fact that we do think that these exemptions over time cause harm and result in infringement. And the evidence that I've put forward about that in this discussion during this cycle is similar to things we've put forward in the past and that have not, in the office's view, been enough to deny exemptions. So I just wanted to be upfront about that from the beginning, but I didn't want it to get confused here at the end that I was saying everything that I've put forward has been rejected in the past. I don't think that's the case. Mr. Freeman keeps referring to our list from our comments. I mean, what we tried to do is just summarize what EFF put in their comments. So this is not our list. It's just a list of things that Mitch put in his comments that we were trying to respond to. So and then the last thing I guess I'll say in the spirit of fun that Mitch was raising earlier is that, you know, touche on that one. We do want people having fun and our clients love that people enjoy their products. And so, you know, congrats, you made a good, good point there.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Williamson?
I just wanted to take a moment to express my appreciation to Mr. Reed for his contributions to Open WRT and to the Copyright Office and the NTIA. I know that this proceeding is, is a long one and potentially grueling at times. And so I want to thank you for your dedication and professionalism throughout this process.
Thank you. I think we all appreciate the time that it takes for participants as well and appreciate you coming forward and sharing your thoughts. I know this proceeding was not mentioned as particularly fun, but we appreciate you showing up and I think it is important to the process. We're going to stop 14 minutes early. And then we will start at 12 Eastern with Class 10, which is, I'm sorry, 1 PM Eastern, which is Class 10 unlocking. And so if anyone is in the attendee or anyone else wishes to sign up for the audience participation session, that will be, that will conclude these hearings. So this is sort of last chance to sign up if anyone wants to contribute anything else to our discussion. Okay, thank you.